Welcome to the Churchill County Planning Commission meeting. It's March 14th at 6:00 and I call this meeting to order. Item two, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item three, is there any public comment that is not on the agenda?
Too many gray hairs up here.
Is there any public comment that is not on this agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to item four, verification of the posting of the agenda?
The agenda was posted on May 8th in accordance with NRS 241 and Churchill County Code.
Thank you Diane. Moving on to item five, consideration of possible action of approval of the agenda as submitted or revised. May I have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman Mark Hyde. Yeah, I move that we approve the agenda as submitted or revised.
It has been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Passes unanimously. Moving on to item six, verification notification of all landowners in accordance with NRS and Churchill County Consolidated Development Code.
All efforts to reach out to the neighboring landowners was made as required.
Thank you Diane. Moving on to item seven, consideration of possible action, approval over the minutes of the meeting held on A, March 24th, 2025 special meeting, B, April 9th, 2025 public hearing, and C, April 22nd, 2025 workshop.
Motion should approve.
Has been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Passes unanimously. Item eight, old business. Number A, consideration of a possible action, review of a special use permit, SUP 001-068 for an off premises outdoor storage yard previously granted to Jared Card of Card Trucking LLC on May 10th, 2023. The property is located at 2555 Beasley Drive, Assessor's Parcel Number 007-171-80, previously 007-171-62. A condition for approval was an annual review until the Planning Commission determines if it is no longer necessary. Is there anybody here to represent on this behalf? All right, seeing none. Randy, could you give us a little overview?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair and fellow commissioners, Randy Hines, Public Works Planning and Building. So again, last year, June 10th of 2024, the applicant came in to come in front of you guys and all the conditions of the SUP were met minus the landscaping and the screening. The screening was done on the north and the east side, but not on the west side. And there had been some boulders put around the front of the property for the landscaping. Since then, we actually went out there today. It does look, appear that there's screening now on the west side of the parcel. That goes around that gravel area where they were storing the joists. There has not been any additional landscaping put around there, but again, still the boulders are there, so it's a pretty basic landscaping plan, so that's kind of where it sits today.
Thank you Randy. Based on, I mean, we've seen this property and stuff, and I don't know if we want to just leave this up to, to the Public Works to make that determination if the landscaping's met, to no longer require review? Or if we want to review this in a year, I'll leave that up to the board on what they would like to recommend?
Mr. Chairman Jeff Goings, just a quick question. So nothing has happened since last year's review?
No, the screening's been put on, on the west side. There has just been no additional landscape. He had talked about putting in maybe some colored gravel or something around the boulders and doing something like that. Again, that hasn't been done, but you know, there's an attempt at some landscape out there. It's just, you know, whether we want it, want more than what's there.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, Mark Hyde for the record. Inasmuch as the applicant's not here, you know, I would move that we, that we have this come up again, that he needs to come and answer the questions about landscaping. And so I think the SUP is, shouldn't be terminated tonight, I guess is what I'm saying.
Go ahead Scott.
Mr. Chair Scott Nelson for the record. We're trying to move to where the Public Works can make these minor decisions without it coming before the board every time. So I would be more inclined to make a motion to leave this up to Public Works to finalize the landscaping and move forward with the special use permit.
So I agree, actually I agree with both members. The problem I'm having with this though, is we, this special use permit was approved with all of the, all of the conditions, and at the time, they had all the joists on the, on the premises and everything was full and, and you know, they were needing that special use permit. Okay? He came back for annual review last year, there was less joists than there was, and he was still debating on whether he was going to finish up. And now, we have no joists left, right? And I see no movement. Now, I, I wholly believe that your office is capable of handling that, but I also am a little concerned in that we put these conditions on these special use permits and then they don't get met, and now they're, you know, left to, they're left out there and, you know, is, is the office ready to handle all of that oversight that's going to be coming on that?
What hasn't been done, just the landscaping?
That is correct.
And there has been landscaping done, so it's an interpretation of whether you guys think it's enough or he thinks it's enough?
What he stated last year was that he was going to add more, and he just has not done that. So he said he was going to do more to finish it up, and it still sits today.
Still an interpretation whether you guys think it's enough or not, right?
Fair enough.
Okay. But the screening and all the other stuff has been met?
Correct.
So we're just talking about minor landscape? I think you guys can handle that.
Tammy Edgman for the record. Is landscaping being met per the requirements that you guys are requiring everyone on the highways to do? I mean, if it's good for one, it's good for all in my view. So if he hasn't met, if he hasn't met the requirements that we're requiring everybody else to do, and he's not here on his behalf to speak, that says a lot too.
Yeah, and it's, it's typically, we don't really have a, a set landscape plan that, it's same for everybody, right? Typically, it's somebody presents a plan to us and we say that that's acceptable, right? I think what was determined was just the boulders, I guess wasn't acceptable enough. And he, he had mentioned that he would add more, and at this, when we went out there today, there's just not more added. So that's, I'm just, I'm just reporting what I saw, so. And if he's not here to, to talk about it, that's, you know.
So again, I would have to agree with Member Nelson. I think, I think this is something that could be handled through your department. But I, I also think that we definitely need to hold them accountable for when we do these, these special use permits with these conditions, that they fulfill the conditions. Otherwise, you know, the next thing you know, we've got a problem with somebody going, well, he didn't have to fulfill his conditions. So like I said, I think if this is something your department knows they can handle, I think probably most of us are in agreement, but I think it definitely needs to be addressed.
Okay. Yeah, and that was, I mean, I think in the past couple of meetings, we've done that with other ones too, so we'll definitely take care of that internally.
Well, and I think at that point, if it isn't, has not been met, to Randy's standards or that, then it would come back to us at that point. So can I get a motion to?
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we turn the, cancel, or we don't have to have the annual review anymore. We'll leave that up to the Planning Department and their officials to make sure that all of the conditions have been met from here on out.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item B, under old business, consideration of possible action of a special use permit, SUP 001-086 for a home-based business previously granted to Clayton and Jolene Bryant, Dead Eye Dirt Works on May 8th, 2024. The property is located at 3205 Brookside Circle, Assessor's Parcel Number 008-421-23. A condition of approval was an annual review to determine if the scale of the operation is still appropriate for a home-based business. Is there anybody here to speak on that behalf? Please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jolene Bryant, 3205 Brookside Circle.
You. And then Randy, would you like to give a little background?
Sure. Again, Randy Hines for the record, this was a home-based business that came to us last year for, is it Dead Eye Dirt Works? And, and again, it was, some of the, some of the concerns in this was the size of the, of the home-based business, right? And I think if I come back in here, we were limiting the business to two trucks, a Mini-X, a skid steer and a trailer. And, and also that, that we didn't want the business to expand, especially being in a neighborhood. So in correspondence with, with the applicant, this, it's been, we've been told that the scale of the operation has not changed, and then all other conditions of that SUP have been met. So that's kind of how it sits today.
Thank you Randy. So is the, the business has remained the same, nothing's changed, kind of status quo?
Yep, and we're looking for property. We're just, I mean, I have a real estate agent we're working with, brokers we're working with, we just haven't, I've been talking with Mr. Patterson about different questions and concerns I've had about different property we've looked at buying, like we're actively working on finding property.
Thank you. So I think based on that there hasn't been any added employees, the business hasn't changed, I mean, in my opinion, I don't see why we couldn't do this for an additional year or, you know, until you find some commercial property.
The Mini-X hasn't even been on our property in months. It goes from job to job. I mean, there's, everything that we have listed, we've provided, it's not even, that's not even all on the property.
Yeah, so, and with that being said, I'll open up the board. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add?
Just a quick question. We haven't had any complaints, the public hasn't complained, there's no letters, there's no feedback in a negative way in, in any way, is there?
No, sir.
Thank you.
I guess I can ask real quick, is there any public comment on this? All right, seeing none. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman Mark Hyde for the record. Just for clarification, is this something that we, every year need to review then?
Yeah, I think so. That we would review this every, I mean, to see if there's expansion or, or that we're meeting the requirements that we put in.
I would definitely, I'd like to have it before next year.
So can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair Vic Anzoghi for the record. I move to approve the renewal of this temporary use permit for Clayton and Jolene Bryant of Dead Eye Dirt Works for one year.
It's been moved in second. Mark Hyde was with the second Diane. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Seeing none unanimously? Thank you. All right, moving on to item nine, new business. Item A, consideration of a possible action, a tentative parcel plan application, PC 25-00003, filed by Bart Hyatt. The property is located at Boundary Road, Assessor's Parcel Number 009-071-27, consisting of 66.54 acres in the A-10 zoning district. The applicant proposes to divide the parcel into six parcels of approximately 11 acres each. Is there anybody on, to speak on this behalf? And can you please state your name and address for the record?
David Crook, I'm with Limousin Associates, 275 West Williams.
All right, thank you. And then Dean, would you like to give us a little background?
I'm going to recuse myself real quick. Mr. Chair Vic Anzoghi for the record, I'm going to recuse myself for family orientation. Thanks.
Thank you.
So yeah, thank you, Members of the Planning Commission, Dean Patterson, Public Works and Planning for the record. So this property is located on Boundary Road, which serves as the east boundary of the Fallon Paiute Shoshone Reservation. The applicant has proposed a parceling plan that would result in six lots that will in turn be implemented in two serial parcel maps. All six lots will be residential lots, fronting on Boundary Road, as you can see on the screen, which is also a county-maintained gravel road, and that is the requirement for creating new lots, is that it be on a county-maintained road. The staff report reviews the approval criteria. This is a fairly standard project. There are only two issues of note that arose during the review. The first is that a friction zone or, or I should say, and, an agricultural protection plan are required to protect adjacent agriculture. Most of the different friction zone buffers use separation to reduce incompatibility problems. Staff recommends that the adjacent roads, canals, ditches, drains and property line or road setbacks provide adequate separation, in this case, except for the north property line. In that case, staff recommends a 75-foot agricultural setback, agricultural protection setback, which I, along that north line, to keep buildings away from the farm field, and that is included on the latest version. Yeah, thank you Diane. Latest version of the map. The second issue is that the tentative parceling plans require soil information to be provided, and the map and submitted geotech report indicate that soil conditions exist that have severe problems related to development, and they cover most of the site. Clay soils mean that specials, specialized septic systems will be needed. Expanse of clays will need specialized construction methods to deal with them, such as removal and replacement of soils for foundations. Corrosive soil chemistry will require resistant construction methods. A recommended condition will require special notification, specific notification of these problems on the map. No comments were received. Staff recommends approval with conditions in the staff report, and with that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you Dean. Is there anything you would like to add?
Pretty much what we discussed.
Okay. I'd read everything and looked through anything, and I am good with everything, so I'll open it up to the rest of the board.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chairman Jeff Goings. The only question I have is, I mean, you've obviously read these conditions, and everybody accepts them, and they're acceptable to the applicant.
Yep.
Perfect. That's all I asked.
Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman Mark Hyde for the record. Based on the information provided in the application, in the staff report and heard tonight, I move to find that the criteria found in Churchill County Code 16.04.040C and Churchill County Code 16.04.050 have been met for the land division application, and therefore recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the proposed tentative parceling plan for Bart Hyatt to divide APN number 009-071-27 into six lots. This approval is subject to conditions as listed in the staff report.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you. So with any zone change, map ordinance amendment or, and PUD application, it's always forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners with the Planning Commission's recommendation. So, thank you. Go ahead and stay there for the next one. So we'll move on to item B, under the new business, consideration of a possible action, parcel map application, PC 25-00004, filed by Alex Quintana. Property is located at Cardinal Drive, Assessor's Parcel Number 008-211-94, consisting of 57.4 acres in the A-5 zoning district. The applicant proposes to divide the property into four parcels. Could you please state your name and record for, or address for the record again?
Again, David Crook with Limousin Associates, 275 West Williams.
All right, thank you. And Dean, would you like to give us a little background?
Thank you. Dean Patterson, Public Works and Planning for the record. The proposed parcel map will result in four lots, which you can see on the screen there, all fronting Cardinal Drive. The smaller three lots will be of roughly equal size, being around five acres. The large remainder lot will have a home site available, but will also encompass a large wetland and pond complex of over 30 acres that dominates this parcel. That complex will be protected by a conservation easement as required by code, which you can see on the map there. An important point is that the existing lot was recently created by a boundary line adjustment with the intent to be developed using the cluster development provisions. This would have allowed approximately 10 to 11 small lots, with the remainder lot having a conservation easement on the wetland pond complex. The applicant does not want to pursue that path of development. He understands that the proposed parcel map still requires the conservation easement, but will eliminate the possibility of having the extra lot. So I just want to point out that he is aware of that. The staff report reviews the approval criteria. This is a fairly standard project. The only issue of note that arose during the review is using onsite septic in a location that is well-known to have high groundwater, as also evidenced by the wetlands and ponds. While specialized septic systems may be needed, the four proposed lots also contain elevated land. There's a number of hills around the property. That should be suitable for standard systems, so no special conditions are needed in this case. The other issue is that power does not run along Cardinal Drive through the project, but it does extend to adjacent homes on the east and west sides. Three of the four lots, but parcels currently served by power, only the fourth lot in the middle does not, but it will not be distant from a power source. There's no comments that were received. Staff recommends approval with conditions in the staff report, and with that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you Dean. Is there anything you'd like to add, sir? All right. And I'd also reviewed this, and looks good to me, and I will open it up to the board if there's any comments that they would like to make. All right, seeing no comments, is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Tammy Edgman for the record. Based on the information provided in this application and the staff report and heard tonight, I move to find that the criteria found in Churchill County Code 16.04.040C and Churchill County Code 16.04.050A have been met for the land division application, and therefore recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the parcel map for Alexis Quintina at APN 821194 into four lots. This approval is subject to conditions as listed in the staff report. The other two, okay. B, they have to accept the offer to grant the easements identified on the maps, and C, they have to reject offers to dedicate land and improvements.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you again, and with any zone change, map ordinance amendment or PUD application, is always forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners with the Planning Commission recommendation. Thank you. All right, moving on to item C, under new business, consideration of possible action, a special use permit application, SUP 25-000009 for a communications tower antennas filed by Jeremy Jordan of Precision Site Development on behalf of T-Mobile. The property is located at 25 South Harmon Road, Assessor's Parcel Number 007-932-26, consisting of 7.14 acres. In the C-2 zoning district, the applicant proposes to add antennas and accessory facilities to the existing tower, which is located within the NAS Fallon overlay. Is there anybody to speak on this behalf? Please come up, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Philip Thomas. I'm with Precision Site Development, and we are representatives for T-Mobile. I have nothing to add, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, we'll have Dean give us a little background. Thank you.
Thank you Dean Patterson, Public Works and Planning for the record. The applicant is requesting to co- locate new antennas on an existing cellular communication tower. The tower site is at the Harmon Junction Store, at the junction of Harmon Road and Austin Highway. Normally, an antenna co-location only requires a zoning review rather than a special use permit. However, this case involves a tower located in the NAS Fallon overlay zone and under the main jet fighter flight path, which requires that this review be bumped up to an SUP, special use permit, in order to provide the Navy with the opportunity to evaluate the impacts on their operations. The 100-foot tower has previously obtained permits and is authorized to allow co-location of additional antennas. No tower changes are proposed. A new candelabra structure will be installed below the existing one at the top, and it will hold six new antennas with associated ground equipment. Navy staff only recently commented in the last couple of days, they did not express concerns other than coordinating with the applicant to avoid radio frequency interference. So please reach out to them, and if you need contact, I can provide those. And that, that requirement is in recommended conditions of approval. No comments were received other than the Navy and the building department noting that building permits are required. That'd be, staff is recommending approval with conditions in the staff report, and with that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you Dean. So have you been in contact with the base, or with the Navy?
Not yet, no.
You haven't? Okay.
But there shouldn't be an issue.
That way? Okay. With that being said, I will open it up to the board if there's any other questions Seeing none, is there any public comment? All right, seeing none, may I get a motion?
Tammy Edgman for the record. Based on the information provided in the application, the staff report and heard tonight, I move that the findings have been met for the performance with criteria found in the CC 16.08.080H, and therefore approve the application for a special use permit for cellular antenna co-location at 25 South Harmon Road, APN is 007-932-26. This approval is subject to all conditions as listed in the staff report.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. There is a 10-day appeal period on all applications approved by the Planning Commission. After that time, the department will be in contact with applicant to complete the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item D, under new business, consideration of possible action, a special use permit application, SUP 25-000010 for a communications tower and antennas filed by Alonso Williams of NNE Construction, Inc., on behalf of CC Communications. The property is located at 16799 Carson Highway, Assessor's Parcel Number 007-021-65, consisting of 1,680.3 acres in the RR zoning district, RR 20 zoning district. The applicant proposes to construct a new telecommunications tower with antennas. The applicant proposes to construct a new telecommunications tower with antennas. Is there anybody to speak on this behalf? Please come up. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Alonso Williams with NNE Construction, 122 Quentin Way in Fallon, Nevada.
All right, thank you. And then Dean, would you like to give us a little background?
Thank you, Dean Patterson, Public Works and Planning for the record. The applicant is requesting to construct a new 30-foot lattice communication tower. The new tower requires a special use permit. A previous application authorized the existing tower. However, one of the tenants has problems due to other electromagnetic activity on the tower. The new tower will allow separation from the main tower to reduce reception problems. The proposed tower is a 30-foot lattice tower. Diane, can you switch to the, yeah, I think, another one? Another one. Yeah, it's the middle tower there, 30 feet. It has a triangular cross-section. No antennas are proposed with the new tower. The existing support facilities will likely be used for the existing client, and then the existing equipment will be moved over to the new tower. If this is the case, no later reviews will be needed. If not, if it's not the case, the additional review will be needed for antenna placement. And then all new development will be placed within the existing fenced area. There are a number of typical concerns that go with the new tower. Communication towers with extensive antenna arrays are often a source of concern for adjacent neighbors, but there are none. The county normally considers whether the tower may fall onto adjacent properties, but it's set back further from, further than its height from the property lines. The proposed tower will make the site more visible from the highway and the La Haute and Recreation Area than the existing tower, but the impact should be slight at the distance that it's located. Towers can be an attractive nuisance for young people who won't decline them, but security fencing exists around the tower and equipment pads, and the site is remote and difficult to get to. New towers can be an aircraft safety concern, but this one will be shorter than the existing main tower. So, no impacts are expected. The Navy provided comments in the last couple of days. They had no concerns other than coordinating regarding radio frequency interference if the planning. Yeah. So, in this particular case, they're going to be moving the existing radio antennas over to the new tower, so that should not be an issue for the Navy. No comments were received other than the Navy and the building department noting that building permits are required. Staff recommends approval with conditions in the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Dean. Is there anything you'd like to add?
Nope, that's it.
All right. And with that, I will open it up to the board if there's any questions, comments, or concerns. Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, may I get a motion?
Tammy Edgeman for the record. Based on the information provided in the application and the staff report and heard tonight, I move that the findings have been met for conformance with the criteria found in Churchill County Code 16.08.080H and therefore approve the application for a special use permit for a new communication tower and assessors parcel number 007-021-65. This approval is subject to all conditions as listed in the staff report.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you. There is a 10-day appeal period on all, on applications approved by the Planning Commission. After that time, the department will contact the applicant to complete the process. Thank you. Moving on to item E, new business, consideration of a possible action, a special use permit application, SUP 25-000011 for a crop processing and storage filed by Alex Peaton. The property is located at 1450 McLean Road, assessors parcel number 008-731-04, consisting of 6.31 acres in the A5 zoning district. The applicant proposes to convert a vacant grain handling facility into a wood pellet production facility. The application includes a request to be considered similar to grain processing rather than timber processing. And I see you're up here, Alex. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Alex Peaton, 5440 Desert, 5440 Desert Hills Loop. Or is the property?
No, you're, yeah, that's good. So, Dean, would you like to give us a little background on this?
Thank you, Dean Patterson, Public Works and Planning for the record. So, I don't usually spend much time going through the materials in the staff report, but given the number of comments that we received, I'm going to spend a little more time than normal. There are two parts to this application, a request for similar use determination as crop processing and the special use permit for crop processing. If the similar use determination is denied, the use is prohibited, and the SUP would not be acted on. Pardon me. Hold on. Sorry about that. Regarding the request for similar use determination, this application proposes to make wood pellets. The use table in the county code has two listing options. Timber processing and storage, which involves breaking trees down into products. Examples would be sawmills, paper mills, plywood mills, et cetera. The other option, thank you. The other option is crop processing and storage, which involves turning crops into foodstuffs. Examples would include flour mills, cereal making, cold warehouses, canning plants, bottling plants, extract processing, et cetera. The use table does not address the use of byproducts from wood facilities to create wood pellets. Specifically, the project is proposing to use wood waste, including wood chips and sawdust from sawmills and similar timber processing facilities to create wood pellets. The use of wood would normally put the project into the same category of timber processing facilities, but the processing of small particle, small particles uses the same machinery as used to make feed pellets, which would have been crop processing. So, the use does not clearly fall into one listing or the other. The applicant has submitted a request to be considered as similar to crop processing and storage facility because his operation is very similar to it. The master plan and zoning districts emphasize protecting agricultural lands from uses that make agriculture more difficult, especially converting agricultural lands. You would not normally want industrial uses going into the agricultural lands. Both crop processing and timber processing are industrial uses and would normally go in a centrally located industrial or heavy commercial zone with resource products from a broad area brought to the facility to process them into something else. In Churchill County, the distinction between crop processing and timber processing comes in where they are located, which is why we are now. Both can have sizable neighborhood and environmental impacts, with timber processing often having more noise impacts, like sawmills, and odor impacts, like paper mills. But because of the connection to crops, crop processing is also allowed in agricultural zones, and that's what Mr. Peaton is asking for here. Crop processing in the agricultural zones requires a special use permit because there may be issues that need conditions of approval, and some locations may not be appropriate. The applicant understands that the project would normally need to be different, would normally be, need to be located in a different zone and requests to be temporarily considered as crop processing. This will allow him to test a startup business at the site, which has most of the needed equipment. Staff and the applicant discussed the likelihood that if the project does a success and grows, it would probably have to move to an appropriate location. Since the requested use requires a special use permit, the director defers the final determination of the planning commission, to the planning commission decision on the, on the permit. If determined to be crop processing, staff recommends that the operation should not be altered to increase capacity beyond the existing facilities, such as hiring employees, additional structures, larger equipment, larger capacity equipment, or redesigning the equipment layout to increase capacity. For such expansion, the business should move to a differently zoned property. So, that's the similar use determination portion. Regarding the special use permit, the application proposes a small one-man operation, almost like a home business. The operation would occupy a small area of the feedlot and uses the existing facilities that are there for a small-scale feed processing operation that have been there for a long time. Those include silos, command systems, and the office building. The site plan shows a layout of operations, and the application provides a detailed description of the process. The storage and particle milling operations will mostly be located around the silos. Hammer mill will be used to break down the larger wood pieces into sawdust sizes suitable for pellet extrusion, and it would be in a sound insulated building, which is important. The office, restrooms, pellet processing, packaging, warehouse, and storage yard are located in or near the existing building. A pellet processing machine will be, will be used that forces the wood through the pellet extrusion phase. Staff recommends that this machine also be in a sound insulated space to reduce noise. The project will be a one-man operation using largely automated equipment and run by the applicant. Staff recommends that no additional employees be allowed. The application and conversations with the applicant describe the wood pellet manufacturing operation. The wood chips are picked up at their source facilities and brought to the site with a pickup and dump trailer. They're dropped off and moved to the primary storage silo. Is that the biggest silo, Alex? Yeah. Then chips are conveyed to be reduced to sawdust particles in the hammer mill. The reduced particles are then conveyed to another silo for storage. From there, particles are conveyed in an underground tube to the main building for moisture conditioning and extrusion through the pellet press. The pellets are then cooled, dried, and packaged. The packaged pellets are stored in the warehouse or storage yard until they are transported to sales destinations, possibly using a semi-truck, but usually with the applicant's own truck and trailer. Operations are split with the hammer and, the silo and hammer mill activities being daytime operations, while the pellet pressing and packaging operations are continuous 24/7 operations. Since there's no employees other than the owner, the facility is highly automated. Nighttime operations in the main building will be automated without personnel using remote monitoring equipment. Both machines create noise, similar to a lawnmower. Mills are, that create a lot of dust particles are a fire and explosion hazard. The applicant describes his safety measures in the application. Initially, the applicant will be only one employee, though plans in the application, sorry, and then in plans to start operations at about 300 pounds per hour, but the application includes hiring employees in the future if capacity goes over 600 pounds per hour. Staff recommends that additional employees not be allowed in order to encourage the facility to find a new location when it grows to that point. For context, 300 pounds per hour would create less than 240-pound bags per day, which equates to about three and a half pallets of product per day, and that would be one or two delivery trucks of final product per week. 600 pounds per hour, which is one of the numbers used in the application, would double these numbers. Staff report reviewed the approval criteria regarding compatibility with the neighborhood. Nearby uses are agriculture with adjacent, I'm sorry, with associated residences or residential lots that have been split off from the farm. Two homes lie to the east at approximately 500 and 750 feet. A subdivision is approximately 1,000 feet to the north. Other homes in the area are 1,000 feet or more away. There are noises from farming and livestock operations in the area, sometimes quite noisy. The project includes interior machinery noise and exterior truck traffic noise. The hammer mill and pellet press will be noisy, which would normally be incompatible with residential uses if they were outside, but the machines will be inside sound insulated spaces, which should reduce noise to background agricultural noise levels. Another criteria relates to overburdening public services and infrastructure. The only issue of note was addressing the fire hazards of milling operations. Note that wood particles have a lower combustion hazard than fine-grained flour mills and similar operations. The applicant has been coordinating with the fire marshal, and the application describes safety measures. The fire marshal approval, the state fire marshal approval is required, as well as construction inspections of the fire system and annual inspections. McLean Road is a state highway. NDOT did not respond, I'm sorry, they did not comment on the project. With small levels of passenger and truck traffic, McLean has capacity to handle this additional volume. The staff report reviews environmental impacts, which can be managed with mitigation required in the conditions of approval. There have been many comments submitted that raise concerns about impacts from neighbors. From reading them, there seems to be misconceptions about what the applicant is proposing. Some comments seem to think that the applicant is proposing to do agriculture, though he isn't, and is proposing to be similar to crop processing, which I've described before. Some of the comments seem to think there's a big plant being proposed that's creating wood pellets. This will be a very small operation using existing facilities, and if it's successful and grows, it will eventually move to a different site. To be clear, if this were a large plant that was being proposed, the impacts would be much larger, but this project is almost like a home business, as I mentioned before. Some comments were concerned with air quality impacts from sawdust and milling operations. These are the elements that create an increased fire hazard, and those must be controlled. So, those should not be an issue for neighbors. Operations are enclosed, and the particles are not freely released to the outside air. There were comments that were concerned with air and water quality impacts from chemical emissions. The operation will not use chemicals. While such chemicals may be used in normal timber processing, such as plywood or paper or glue laminated beams, the application is not proposing using such products to make wood pellets. There were some comments concerned that there were large, that there were lots of large trucks deliveries that were going to happen. The applicant will only need a handful of deliveries per week of product coming in and going out. A large truck might be used, but mostly it will be his pickup and trailer. The biggest concern seems to be noise from the machinery. Some of the comments seem to think that the machinery will be outside rather than in the sound insulated space, which greatly reduces noise outside the building. So, most of these machines are about as loud as a lawn mower, as a lawnmower that most people use every week, or farm equipment that regularly operates. In addition to those comments, the fire marshal's been working with the applicant and provided written comments, as noted above. The building department provided written comments that combustible dust requires special review by state and local fire departments. In addition, building permits are needed that meet building codes. The building must meet handicapped accessibility standards. A licensed contractor will be required. So, Alex, you want to be coordinating with the building department about that. And the state is responsible for commercial, commercial septic systems. The staff report recommends approval with conditions of approval in it. And then, please note that the motion for decision includes two parts, one for the similar use determination, one for the special use permit. With that, I'll be happy to answer questions, and I'm sure Mr. Peaton can answer questions as well. Oh, Mr. Peaton may be wanting to do some presentation of his own.
Mr. Chair, it's Randy Heinz for the record. Joe, how did you want to handle the, the letters that were received?
If you would identify that there's been letters received, at the number that they are in the record, and then just state whether they were in support or opposed.
Okay. Yeah, so, so the office received letters in the mail and email. There was 11 total that I, that I have, and they're, they're in record, and...
How many were in favor and how many opposed?
All 11 were opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you, Dean. That was a lot, Dean. But, so if anything, Alex, do you have a presentation or PowerPoint?
Not necessarily a presentation.
All right, so then, would you walk us through the process of what you're looking to do and produce?
Yeah, so what it is, I basically begin wood chips from either local sources, tree service companies, Battleborn Tree Services in Carson City, which I've already talked to. They have huge piles of these wood chips that basically just go to waste, maybe compost if they're lucky enough to get there. I've also been talking with Chad Lemmers from Nevada Department of Forestry. He's in the biomass section since December, and the Nevada Department of Forestry loves the idea because they have so much wood waste when they clean out these forests from either wildfires or to prevent wildfires. And what would normally happen is they would make slash piles and burn them, also polluting the air, you know, all the great stuff that goes with that. So I'd be working, working with them, also getting the wood chips from them, so helping them out. The other thing, too, is it also does help put money back in the forest department so they can keep going with these forestry services. Anyways, I basically would bring my dump trailer, which I have, I don't have yet, but it'd just be about a 16-foot dump trailer and a truck, about one load a day from Carson City, and dumping it there in the, at the, but next to the big silo, there is an in-ground grain auger or screw auger. There's also an elevator, grain elevator, which will help put the chips inside the big silo. From there, I'd just go through a flexible screw auger to the hammer mill, which will be in probably about a 10-by-10 hush house, insulated, probably twice, will have both foam insulation and fiberglass insulation with siding and probably also interior siding. More likely be OSB inside and then just paneling on the outside. After it goes through there, it'll get put back into one of the other silos till it's ready to be processed through the moisture conditioner and the pellet press. The moisture conditioner and pellet press are, you could almost think of the same thing. Well, they go hand in hand, and they get there with the screw auger, a long screw auger, from the small silo to the moisture conditioner and then through the pellet press, and then it has to go through a cooler, basically just a grain bin with some blowers on it. And then, once it's cooled enough, it will just be weighed, bagged, and pelletized.
Thank you, Alex. And so when you talked about the 24/7 operation, that was in more of the bagging and doing that in the building, correct?
That is correct. The bagging, the column stacker, pellet press, that will be 24 hours. The other thing is, if I am able to at least increase my production per hour, but not the overall amount per year, I can actually decrease those numbers significantly with each machine having the amount of time to process. So it would essentially, it'll only be 24 hours for my first, like a go-in, prove it out, and then if I can purchase another machine, I'll cut that amount of time in half.
Okay. And then, on the noise factor, on the hammer mill, can you kind of give us what decimals that would be at?
Yeah, so a hammer mill is typically around 85 to 100 decibels. This being a small one, it's going to be closer to 85, so if you're next to it. Outside the shed, approximately 10 feet, it's going to be around 60 to 85 decibels, 85 being the highest. And then, so, and just to give an example, 85 decibels is like a truck idling or vacuum cleaner, and that's just 10 feet away. By the time it gets to the nearest house, roughly about 605 feet, it's only 49 decibels. Note that the background noise in your home is typically 55 decibels, so you really won't even hear it if you're in your home.
And that's just on the hammer mill? And then on the other manufacturing side, at what decimal level is that?
60 or less.
And that would be inside, so outside even?
About, probably around 20 decibels, less than that. So around the same as the hammer mill, far away.
Okay, so from the noise, it wouldn't be any louder than a car driving by at best?
Yeah.
So, all right. You've answered my question, so I'll open it up here to the board if there's any other questions or concerns.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and Mark Hyde for the record. So, Mr. Peden, just to be clear, both operations will be in buildings. The hammer, that's going to be in a building, and the pellet press, that's also in a building. So a huge concern for the public, not only with the noise, and I think you've addressed that, but a huge concern is pollution. And part of that would be any kind of dust that is created through this operation that could get over on crops or neighbors. Could you address that, of how that's being controlled?
Sure. Because most of it will be inside containers, screw augers, none of it will actually be exposed to the air. Granted, you know, like sand in the desert, it gets everywhere, you know, and it's just as fine, it can be. There'll be dust collectors anywhere that's needed, you know, screw augers are a tube, essentially, so you're not going to need them anywhere around there, but it could be needed around the cooling chamber in the hammer mill, which the hammer mill will definitely have a dust collector. By what I'm told by the manufacturer of the hammer mill, there isn't really that much dust when you do hammer mill wood chips. But I also know we live in Nevada, so.
And that's inside a building, right?
Yes, it's inside a building. It'll be sealed. There won't really be any vents. I'll have to have one vent for the hammer mill, just because there is a suction side of the hammer mill and then exhaust side, and with exhaust side, it will be the dust collector.
Thank you.
Tammy Edgeman for the record. Is all the equipment on site for this at this time?
No, no, none of it's been purchased. The only thing I've been working on is the automation portion of it.
Okay, so once all the equipment is purchased, there'll be inspections done, Dean, in regards to the sound barrier being up to code and restrictions and everything prior to any processing or any attempt of operation?
All right.
Hang on a second, I had a couple more questions. In regards to, Dean, in regards to the request in the different zones and request for temporary being considered as a crop processing, who is going to regulate the small business in that there's only one person at all times there? And who regulates and monitors that it's going to remain a one-man operation?
I believe one of the, yeah, it's subject to annual review, so we'll certainly be checking up on it every year. Otherwise, you know, we trust the applicant in pretty much all permits that happen.
If this is something that we choose to give a try or take a chance at, what is the timeframe? Like, can we change it? Does it have to be a year? Can we go, you know, three months, six months, see if there's complaints, if there's problems from neighbors versus waiting a year?
Yeah, you can set the time if you like.
You can set it to any duration that you'd like to have reviewed. I'd also like to mention that, you know, when you say who's checking, obviously there is a complaint process for any operation in the county. If we receive complaints, then we'll go out there and check. It's not something where we have to wait the entire duration. So, for example, if you set it for a year, or six months, or three months, and three days after the process is starting, we receive 15 complaints, we aren't going to wait three months.
Process would be made, can you explain how that would go through, Lorelei?
Yeah, so on our website, any complaints would be ran through our CitizenServe portal, and then we would, we receive those, and then typically we investigate those within a day or two, right, Lorelei?
So for the public, I know how it works, but I'm wanting the public to know how they would do their complaints. So it wouldn't be calling 911, it would be going?
Yeah, you wouldn't call 911. It's, you go to the Church County Public Works web, or Church County website, Public Works Planning and Building, and then there's Code Enforcement, I think on the side there, and you click on Code Enforcement, and it redirects you to a Citizen Serve website where you have to create an account. And again, it could be, you could do it anonymously, you could do it with your name and address. You would file your complaint, and then that would be, then we would do it internal, we would bring it in internally, and then we would do our investigation from there.
Alex, can you give us kind of a, give us some dimensions? You're talking, the hush house is 10 foot by 10 foot? That's what you're thinking? And so, in that scale, like eight foot tall? So we're probably talking about a piece of equipment is maybe, what, six feet long by potentially three feet wide, something like that?
Yes. So it's 75 inches tall, 36 inches long, and then 38 inches wide. Kind of the reason, well, really, that'd be it. You know, I'd build a little bigger for the dust collection and any other equipment, like a VFD or anything like that that I would need in there to control.
So roughly the size of that table that you're sitting on there right there?
Roughly.
Yeah. What about the pellet press? Roughly the same size?
It's even smaller. The pellet press is 39 inches tall, 34 feet long, and 13 inches wide.
It's 34 feet long?
34 inches long.
34 inches long, okay, yeah. Yeah, it just, you know, I think when you read an application like this, you're assuming that we've got this huge, you know, 15-foot long. Yeah, so I wanted to get an idea on that.
And there are big machines, but the manufacturer I'm going through basically specializes in hobbyist machines. So they really aren't that big machines, no more than maybe somebody might have in their yard, you know, to make barbecue pellets or something. The only reason I'm, well, one of the reasons I've gone this way, it's affordable, but having it automated, you can get a little more out of it than what they, given the rate that it can produce, just the automation and keeping it at a constant rate.
I made a statement there, just real quick, like you said something about that they consider this not much bigger than a hobbyist's?
It is basically considered hobbyist, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner Vickian Sodegi for the record. Alex, I think that you stated, you know, a lot of us were wondering, like, how big is this operation? Sounds like it's going to be very small. You're going to use your dump trailer and then a small loader, or just a tractor to kind of move the stuff around?
So luckily, there's a concrete pad right where the screw auger is. That, basically, I would just get a forklift and attachment, just something to push, almost like a plow, just to push it in as it needs, if it needs to, which, I mean, I'm sure it will, or a broom. But no loaders or nothing like that. Just be probably about a 4,500-pound forklift.
Okay, and then on these big special use permits, we like to let you know that there are the recommended conditions. You've seen those?
Yes.
And you're okay with the recommended conditions from the planning department?
Yes.
And to let the population know a couple of those things, just really quick. You know, there's, you're not allowed to increase in size. The biggest one, operation of the business shall be conducted in a manner that does not create a nuisance, public or private, under the Nevada law or Churchill County code, and all state and federal permits are required for this business will be obtained and maintained. I think it's important to say that this is you trying out a hobby, and I don't see any issue with the surrounding area. Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to just note, too, that kind of the reason that got me into this idea was, you look around Fallon, and there is a ton of wood waste in everyone, just about everyone's yard. Everybody's got a pile of, you know, sagebrush, cottonwood limbs, trees, some pine needles, you know, and that's a resource, you know? And you look at the cost of a ton of pellets here, it's about $368, I believe, last winter, and I should be able to come under that by about $100. So it can also give the community great savings. The other thing is, from my knowledge, you can't really get 20-pound bags of pellets, and that's something I want to produce, especially for disabled or senior citizens. One thing, my grandfather, he, when he was older, he wasn't able to lift the 40-pound bags, and so I think with a 20-pound bag, it'd be easier to handle for those that need it.
Thank you, Alex. Any other comment from the board? Scott?
Mr. Chair, Scott Nelson for the record. So you're saying you're going to start out at 300 pounds per hour of production, and then maximum in this facility would be a six, because that's when you have to hire somebody else, correct?
Well, not necessarily, but...
Not necessarily what?
So you look at what, like a big storage or a big pellet factory can do, and you know what, you're talking a ton every 15 minutes, and I'm producing a ton, I think, every three hours. But because it is automated, you might be able to produce more with the given equipment. But it would be around 600 pounds, because in reality, that's all I'll be able to do.
Okay, so my only problem with that is, you know, we're telling the public, hey, he can't grow, he can't do this, he can't do that. We're saying 300 pounds an hour, 600 pounds an hour, but that seems to me like there's nobody set a figure yet, like where that's going to stop. I mean, 600 pounds an hour is 100,000 pounds a week. So that's 2.25 truckloads in, roughly, 2.25 truckloads out, 300 pounds, obviously half that. So I just kind of want to be clear as to how far does this business go at this location and make that clear for everybody so we don't have a problem down the road.
Yeah, and the information that we provided was the information on the application, and the application that's 600. In other conversations with Alex, it was, you know, starting out, he's going to be doing the 300 to start out, with the potential to go to 600 max, and that's what we had put in there. So, again, it's a number that just needs to be determined tonight, if approved, right? It's, if that's what, 600, and that's what he's proposing, then we'll do 600.
Yeah, and I think we kind of need to be stuck right in that area. Jeff Goings for the record. I didn't mean to interrupt. You've done, Scott. Yeah, so also, so you're going to be the wholesale portion of this? I mean, you're the manufacturer wholesaler. How many retailers do you have set up at this point?
Three.
Three? So, and, I mean, can you give us an idea, like, for example, like Scott was saying, he can produce 100,000 pounds of pellets a week. Do you have a source that'll receive 100,000 pounds of pellets at this point a week?
No, no, definitely not. The other thing is, although it's 24 hours a day, seven days a week, it's not, it will never be able to run that much, because you still have maintenance. You know, I got to sleep sometime, you know? So it's not like I'm going to be running all the time, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Really, what I'm looking at, at 600 pounds an hour, my daily output would be nominal of six tons, or, sorry, six pallets a week, or a day, so that's 12 tons. But again, somebody has to be able to purchase that. And being in manufacturing for most of my adult life, you don't want to produce more than you can sell, because then you're waiting on lost profits, basically, it's just sitting there. So this is where I would have to find that balance of what is the market willing to purchase and what can I produce?
And finally, to that, so where do you propose your pellet storage? Your completed pellet storage? Will it be internal of that building as well?
Initially, it probably will be. I hope to get it out of there as soon as I can, you know, once there's a truckload, it's gone. I also, one of the retail places is in Carson City, so there's a big population there that could purchase it. But it would be just outside there, next to the building, behind a fence.
Mr. Chair, if I'd like to add something to Mr. Nelson's comment, right? Maybe we need to get off the 600 pounds per hour and actually do, you know, count that six-hundred pounds per hour and actually do, you know, count that out as being a yearly total, because he's gonna have, right, he'll have orders, he'll know how much product's going out, and maybe that's an easier number to monitor. I mean, like you said, he's not gonna run twenty-four hours a day, you got maintenance, you got sleep, you got other things, so I don't think he's ever gonna hit that total number, yearly number, and maybe that number goes down, maybe you, maybe you make that eighty percent. I'm just throwing out numbers, right, and let's get off the six-hundred pounds per hour, and maybe we do that total for a year, or three months, whatever, if approved, and whatever you want to approve it for, you can see what he runs in that time.
And one of the things that, that's why I kind of went on this, is that if you don't have, I mean, right now, three vendors, if you have three retailers, and especially this time of the year, I mean, you're probably gonna have an inventory weakness, so that means you're gonna have some downtime where you're not gonna be producing pellets, because your inventory hasn't even left your facility yet, correct? So, and maybe that's where we head here, is after you're shipping X amount of pellets a week, and you have established that retail outlet where you're able to, you know, produce six-hundred pounds of pellets a day, three-sixty-five, but, you know, maybe that's, maybe that's the other route we look at at this.
I do have just some numbers. You know, even under the best circumstances, producing for twenty hours a day, only two-hundred-and-sixty days a year, my daily tonnage output, or my yearly tonnage output is one-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-nine pellets. And if you break that down, with a semi-truck can break, or haul twenty-five tons, it's four-point-one-six truck hauls every four days. So it's really, I mean, it seems like a lot when you look at the small number, but when you look at the grand scheme, it's really not much at all. I mean, I would think big R probably sells that in a day, you know.
Yeah, no. All right, thank you. Is there any other comments? So at this time, I will open it up. Is there any public comment? If there, please come up, state your name and address for the record.
Brett Larkin, ten-seventy Rosewood. So I oppose the, I guess, the staff report as it was presented. There's a lot of maybes and mites, and you guys are trying to figure out numbers and how you're gonna regulate it, and the similar to, I guess, connection of, is it similar to farm production or crop production, you know, and what he's doing? I just think, you know, you guys are, you know, trying to stretch too many things to make it fit. You know, I think maybe, you know, I don't oppose his concept, I just oppose where he's trying to do it, and maybe a little bit of the how, and maybe he just needs to find a new location to do it, so that's my input. Then I also did have some questions on, is there, is there any water use, and is there any type of wastewater in your process?
So we'll take all public comment, and then he'll, we'll allow Alex to address any questions that everybody had at that time.
So there was those two things, the, about the water, and, trying to remember the other ones that I had. And then is there, in your process, there's no, like, agent or anything that, like, helps bind it? It's purely just the pressure in the wood? I just want to make sure I get all my questions out there, so we don't forget.
I didn't hear that, when you repeated that question.
He was asking if there's any chemical.
If there's any, like, binding agent or anything that's used.
And which we addressed earlier, that there's no chemicals used.
So just wanted to clarify that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? And then, so we know that with, public comment is limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Dennis Adair, ten-twenty-five Rosewood Drive. Speaking in opposition of this, I think, first of all, the comparison between an agricultural process and a lumber mill process is a real stretch. I think the only similarity in those two industries is probably an auger between silos. The thing that concerns me the most is I kind of get the feeling that we're trying to minimize what the potential impact is, based on absolutely no information related to a running operation similar to this. I submitted a letter, and along with it, I put an attachment with it. And I did a bunch of research, and there's plants like this all over the south, South Carolina, there was a big study done out of Brown University, talking about the dust, the noise. And I was a kid who grew up in a mine. I've grown up in mines, and I've been through lumber mills, and I've never heard a, what do you call it, a hammer something, hammer mill. Never heard a hammer mill sound like a lawnmower or a tractor. And where I live, we don't have much in the way of agricultural noise at all. And so my concern is regarding the dust. The articles indicated increase in asthma due to the dust, and I know we're talking about a, what did you call it, a sound what? Sound, some kind of sound?
Oh, a hush house.
A hush house, yeah. It's not soundproof. And the dust control, according to some of these articles of these plants in the south, they can put all the filters in the world they want on there, and dust still gets out and settles everywhere. And the health problems, the environmental problems, and the social problems that result from that have been enumerated multiple times in all of these articles. So I just recommend that before anything gets passed, we've got some comparisons of apples to apples, so that we know exactly what we're talking about.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Dave Burke, forty-three-sixty Santa Fe Drive. My previous life, before I became a project manager out on base, was Health Safety Environmental Quality Manager. There's not much difference between the dust that this is gonna produce and the dust that rocks produce. There needs to be a scrubber system, a baghouse, there's, there needs to be something. Otherwise, as the previous gentleman complained, you're gonna have dust. It doesn't matter. There will be dust. And I hate to disagree with you, but hammer mills, I have never seen one that's under a hundred-and-forty decibels, and I've seen plenty of crushers in my life. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Julie Jadoffsy Lynch. I live at thirty-five-eighty Bottom Road. I'm less, just nine-tenths of a mile away. I have chemical sensitivities, and to me, to make the analogy that sawdust and sand is a little ridiculous, because I know what sawdust does to me, and I know what sand does to me, and there's a huge difference in my health and my ability to breathe. So as much as I honor the idea, what you've got going on, and I think it's a beautiful thing to be able to do, I just truly think, location, you've got kids right across the street that live in that housing development. Only reason why I heard about it is I had a client that asked me if I got a letter, and I said no. So I can't imagine to all the people out there within that mileage that didn't get a letter, and how unfair it is to them to not know that something is going up right there. And it just, I'm glad there's no chemical use in it, because if it was chemical, I would, I would be moving in a heartbeat if this were approved, because I can't do it. So I'm looking at my own health and the health of the others, people, and then when you look at, if he just said that you can't contain the sawdust, what's going to happen to the hundred-year farms that we have right there in that area? And what is the fairness to those farms, and what they've got going on, and how could they say that they produce healthy foods, even if they're not organic anymore, but that we know they're all-natural, and they're something our community counts on, year after year after year? So that is my biggest question and answer. So I am opposed.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Leslie Beach. I live at sixteen, I mean, where do I live? Sixty-seven-fifty-five Reno Highway. I'm a real estate broker. I've been here thirty-seven years, and I think it's a great idea. Wrong location, okay? Really, I mean, really great idea. And you know what? You shouldn't, you shouldn't have...
Please address the board.
Okay, sorry.
Please do not.
I think it's a great idea. He shouldn't have to tell you how many pounds a day, how many pounds a week. That's getting into his business. It just needs to be in a different location, really. There's a lot of things, I had a whole bunch of questions. Computers, computer-controlled, we know computers never have a problem, right? And we know the neighborhood is residential, agicultural. We want to keep it that way. We don't want to change spot zoning. I just went through that myself. What about the fire in Hazen last year with all of the railroad ties? I mean, if you have an accumulation of wood, it can have spontaneous combustion. That probably won't happen, but there's all these issues. Fire, that is an issue. He's gonna have to, he said in his own words, that he's gotta put up a six-foot fence around it in that neighborhood. It's wide open, it's beautiful. I love that McLean. And as far as semi-trucks, things like that, increasing that is not a great idea as well. And the augers do make noise, whether you're having it in a house, in a hush house. I need one of those for my kids, you know, hush house? Put them in it, anyway. So there's all kinds of ideas, but the biggest issue is, who would be, police this guy, or this business? Not you, not him personally, but who would police the business? We have an industrial site, move it to an industrial site. That's all. Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Amber Sanchez, four-double-oh-seven Cimarron Road, within earshot of this business. I got the letter, so. Actually, I find this an audacious request, actually. We, as stakeholders in the immediate area, do not want this special use permit to be granted, because we do not want a twenty-four-seven, noisy, dusty, manufacturing plant disrupting our neighborhood. We are zoned as agricultural slash residential. Mr. Pedden is not proposing to grow trees. That would be an agricultural endeavor. Wood pellets are not an agricultural product, no more so than toilet paper or plywood, both being wood byproducts, and by no stretch of the imagination are they agricultural. If the planning commission intends to even appear intellectually honest, this special use permit has to be denied. I am extremely concerned also about the twenty-four-seven noise and the woefully unsatisfactory explanation about the insulating properties of your hush house. I don't think OSB and insulating in a ten-by-ten is gonna shut anything down. I like to sleep with my window open at night, and my window is on that side of the house, in direct earshot of your proposed business. I'm gonna hear it. I like my peace and quiet. Right now, I have peace and quiet, and I'm gonna hear a hairdryer, I'm gonna hear a lawnmower, I'm gonna hear an engine idling all night long, and it's gonna drive me bug nuts, and I don't want to hear it, so I'm just telling you. I've got peace and quiet, and I want it to stay that way. It's zoned agricultural and residential, and it should remain that way. I don't understand why you would even consider this, putting a business that's not agriculture on there in a residential slash agricultural slash residentially zoned area. I don't, I don't, I don't even get it. I can't, I can't, I just can't. I'm sorry, I just can't. Anyway, there are air quality concerns. My next-door neighbor has COPD. They got the letter, they're right in, right in the zone. I have a feeling y'all are considering letting this go through and not giving weight to our opinions. I mean, I feel like you're gonna give us, like, five to ten percent, wait our opinions five to ten percent, and wait what he wants to do, like ninety to ninety-five percent. How is that fair? We're the stakeholders here. We've been there for, you know, we've been there fourteen years. People, other people have been in that neighborhood for decades, and he wants to waltz in there and through his, for his financial gain. I applaud entrepreneurship, just not in that location. I echo what everybody else is saying. Love it, love the business, just do it in an industrial park, or out by Kennametal, don't care, just out somewhere where it's not gonna bother anybody. Well, it looks like my time's about it, but it's also gonna devalue our property values. I would have to disclose that, that annoying nuisance noise on a disclosure statement if I go to sell my house.
Thank you very much.
So, anyway, that's another consideration. Thanks.
Is there any other public comment? Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Lisa Whitelander, nineteen-fifty-five McLean Road, and I'm here at this, my family's farms, Latin Farms, right there. And my first opposition is that it is an agricultural area, and this is not agriculture. It's not crop processing. Wood processing is very different, and it does, even in the application, it has all the health, health risks for dust that you can't, you can't contain it all. It's not possible. We also have a lot of wildlife around there. There's a duck pond that my grandfather worked with the conservation district. We have waterfowl and other things that also deserve a quiet place, and the, I can't remember the name, that the, the noise levels for farmland is thirty decibels, so even at forty-nine, that is quite a bit higher from what we have. We have people come to our farm that just come to sit and relax and enjoy the clean air and the quiet, and that will disrupt the area we have there, and we have a lot of people there. So I'd ask you to consider that and to keep it an agricultural district there.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I am Joe Hennessy. I live at twelve-fifty-five McLean Road, one of the closest properties to the proposed business. I, obviously, I oppose the business for the reasons given. I would like you to take weight and special concern.
Sir, could you please speak into the mic?
I would like you to take weight and special concern, considering what the opposition has been proposed to you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right. Alex, so would you like, would you like to address a few of the concerns here, starting with one was, you know, that you're gonna use any water or chemicals in the product?
No chemicals. The binder is actually produced from the lignin that's in the cell structure of the wood. It's hard to believe, but that's all it is. Some, if you, there are some crops that you can actually pelletize, and, but some of them, you do have to have binders, in which those ones, I will not do. As far as the water goes, very little water will be used, because most of the, so it will be used in water, but very little will be used. I can't give an exact amount, because it's based on the moisture content of the sawdust as it comes in. But from what I've gathered, it's actually, will be slightly more waters than what I need to press. Of course, it's, depends on moisture in the air and temperature and all that, but, so very little water will be used, but there will be some.
All right. And then can you kind of go through a little more on the dust particles, and how you would think you would contain any of that?
Yeah, so, I mean, the, anything that's really gonna produce dust would be, like, the grain elevator. You know, there might be some dust coming off of that. It is fully enclosed all the way into the silo, so that should be pretty minimal. There might be a little dust if, when they dump the chips out of the trailer, but even that's pretty minimal. And then everything else is contained. Other, you know, the hammer will produce, produce dust, crushing the chips, but, you know, there'll be a collector on that. Just for example, though, just living here in Nevada, in the desert, you know, there's silica dust out here. We also have arsenic in our water. The place is just dusty in general, even the, hey, to rag on the ag side of it, but even just plowing fields starts up dust, there's bacteria in the dust, valley fever. So honestly, this wood dust is, I would almost say, have very little effect on anybody. I think there's much bigger concerns than what little dust might come out of it.
All right, thank you. And then, Joe, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but... And then, Joe, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but this property is zoned agriculture. And in my line of work, we finance agriculture. And this actual purview falls under ag. I mean, we're not used to it in Nevada because we don't have a lot of timber out here. We got a lot of sagebrush, not a lot of timber. But this is all agriculture use, similar to fishing or anything like that. And I believe it's because of the code, didn't recognize timber, is why we needed an SUP. Otherwise, this business could carry on without an SUP.
Okay, so our code has a list of allowed or uses that are defined by where they're allowed and what the particular zoning is going to be required for a, I believe this is an A5 parcel. For an A5 parcel, what we would do is we would look at what the proposed business is, and we look at the most similar use to designate it. In this case, there were two potential similar uses, one being crop processing and one being timber processing. Under the crop processing, it requires a special use permit. If it was timber processing, like a sawmill, it would be prohibited. And so the decision between, the decision of the board today is to decide whether or not you consider it to be more similar to crop processing or more similar to timber processing. And based on that, you will have an opportunity to decide whether it needs this special use permit or whether it is prohibited entirely.
Thank you, Joe. And then in my experience, I just toured a dehydrated plant that takes all the vegetables that are thrown out, and they dehydrate them, they break them down to a powder, very similar to the sawdust, right? They break it down to a powder, they re-peletize it, and then that is what you feed your dogs and your cats. It goes to the dog food companies, it goes to the cat food companies, and they put that protein back into that pellet and then make it into your dog food, and that's what we all buy. I mean, it's very similar, it's an ag purpose, that's what we've done in agriculture. So I think on the zoning and where this business is located is no different than the dairy being there or any different than the grain mill that Newell Mills runs.
I'm gonna expound on that just a bit because my business is located on the city-county line, and we're right directly behind Fallon Livestock. So what the owners of Fallon Livestock have done is they've discovered that they can bring these wood chips in from the trees. When they come in, trim their trees, they run through those chipper's on site, and then they bring that chip in, and they deliver it in a pile there, and then they mix that in with the manure, and then the manure is then, after a period of time, is then brought back up, and they're, you know, they're adding organics to their manures, basically, is what they're doing. And I can honestly tell you, I've watched those trucks come in now. They usually come in there at least once to twice a week and dump that chips. The chips that are coming out of there are typically very wet. And there's zero dust. There's no dust that I've seen come off of those. Now, I can't speak to what's coming from the Forest Service, but I know that that's part of your process here is to have this wood chip, these tree trimmers bring their material in and add that to your stuff, correct? Okay. And I can attest to that, that I'm there, I see that, and that's happening right in town. And so I felt like if there was gonna be a lot of opposition to it, you would have started hearing it from over in our neighborhood over there. And as far as I know, there is nobody had any, the smells might be a problem, but the dust from the chips is not creating this problem there.
You know, just to show how close similarity is to, you know, you would use the exact same equipment to produce the alfalfa, which we can all agree is a crop, to produce pellet, like rabbit pellets that you would buy in Walmart. So it's the exact same equipment that you would use to produce an alfalfa pellet as you would a wood pellet. Really, it's just a different sized die in the pellet press.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Scott Nelson for the record. So my biggest question is, the alfalfa is usually in a wetter state than dry timber. Anytime you set up like a portable crusher in the state of Nevada, there's some guys talking about rock crushers, and you have to go through a process where you have a cola, you have to identify how many pollutants, how much dust is coming off that crusher. And then after you're all set up, you have to do what's called an opacity test, which somebody has to come and look and see what's coming off of that. And I'm not opposed to your project. I think it does fall under ag. But I don't want to approve it. Have you buy a bunch of equipment and go to work and say, well, you approved it. Doesn't matter what's coming off this now. There's no checks and balances here. I've been involved in asphalt plants and a lot of other things where, yeah, with bag houses and dust collectors, yeah, you can mitigate 99 percent of the dust, and it's not gonna be any worse than an agricultural operation. There's two things that I'm concerned about. A, can you mitigate your sound? B, can you mitigate pollution? And I'm not clear on that because I don't know how much water you're using on your drop points as you're processing. I don't know if you're gonna do an opacity test or have to meet any NDP air requirements. And I don't have any guarantees on your soundproofness. If you could come in and show me that you can mitigate all those things, you would make me feel better. And while not, everybody might 100% agree with me, if there were set parameters, I know that they would be at least more comfortable.
Sure. The noise levels that I actually said earlier are from OSHA, the Building Acoustic Standards and Commonwealth STC Sound Transmission Class, and also well-established acoustic charts. So it's nothing I'm just making up. These are actually government... Uh, no.
They're hypothetical compared to your operation. What I'm saying is, once you're set up, can you prove those numbers? And if you don't fall within those numbers, you know, what are we gonna do about it at that point, Randy? And that's where I want a safety in there that says, hey, if those numbers are correct, charts are great. The reason they do opacity tests on a crusher after setup is to prove that it's, all the things that are supposed to be happening are happening.
Sure.
They do it after setup while in operation. So that charts are great, this is real life.
Right.
And so if we can do, and all that stuff's doable. If you're confident with your numbers, and we're confident that there's not gonna be any dust, the rest of it should be a simple, hey, it's gotta meet these requirements, it can't be over a certain decibel rating, and, you know, we're not putting a bunch of dust in the air.
And I do have to get an EPA permit for this. EPA. I don't remember what class, I think class two. So that is one thing I do have to...
And where do you get that in Carson?
Yes.
So that's Nevada Department of Environmental Protection? Because they're in control in Nevada. Usually, it's not the EPA here.
Okay. It was, yeah, Nevada EPA.
Board of Air Quality.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that was listed in the conditions?
Churchill County Co-compliance Official for the record. Yes, it is stated within the conditions of approval, bullet point nine, NDP and error, and other permits shall be obtained. Anything over an acre requires an NDP permit. And you can look up actually Nevada Division of Environmental Protection, air quality permitting.
But that's anything over an acre of disturbance for dirt. Okay, this is different. So I want to make sure that your NDP permit, is it coming under portable equipment? Like you have to have a cola and it's under portable equipment? And they are gonna do an opacity test after the fact? That's what I don't know exactly what they're requiring from you. And then the noise quality, you're gonna have to get somebody to check that, or we're gonna have to check it after the fact. If people are complaining, if nobody can hear it, I guess it's not a big deal.
Mr. Chair, Randy Hines for the record. We did have, you know, decibel numbers within the staff report, and we took them out because we just weren't sure, you know, again, you could have somebody in the middle of the night sleeping, and it could be, they could just hear something, you know what I mean? So we weren't sure what that decibel number really was. So it was kind of hard for us to determine that because that's not what we specialize in. So if that's something that, you know, if that needs to be researched more to have an adequate number, and it's not necessarily an adequate number at the building or in the building, it's really the residents that are 500, 600 feet away, because they're the ones that are gonna hear it, right? I mean, if you look at the site, there's nobody around there. The closest one, I think, was what, 500 feet away? So you're not measuring it at the building, you'd have to be measuring it closer to that residence to see what that decibel is.
And I'm not saying we need to do that. I'm saying he needs to be prepared to build, since we don't have a requirement for soundproofing, he needs to be prepared to build a structure that is soundproof.
Correct.
And it's easy to do.
Correct.
There are materials out there that we can do that with, it's not a problem. I've done it with big geothermal well pumps and everything else for the sage end to build a sound wall. Not a big deal.
Sure.
But you gotta be prepared to do that. And then the other thing is, is if we have dust coming off the drop points, that is gonna need to be addressed.
Correct. And again, I think that would be something that they absolutely would have to do if there is modifications to the buildings that need to be done to accommodate that or lessen that sound. I mean, that would just be something that we'd have to do, right? As far as the dust, again, I think we should be going to NDP and figuring out exactly what this, what permits are required with this application, right? This use, and get those required permits in place and monitored. So, and I think that was that item number eight, were the state and federal permits, so...
Mr. Chairman, so let's go back to what Member Edgeman talked about earlier. Maybe what we need to do here is set this review in a shorter time period instead of a one-year time period. Maybe what needs to happen here is, you need to get your process up and going and realize that you're gonna have some expenses. And then, once it is going, you've done all your inspections, you've passed everything, we do a three-month review on it. If we have a whole lot of complaints after the end of three months, you may have to invest a whole bunch more into it. I mean, that may be what is the best thing here to satisfy everybody across the board. And instead of doing an annual review, do a three-month, and then we'll kind of play it and see how the public is dealing with it at that point. And that's just a thought.
I think for business sake, Jeff, I agree with the concept, so don't take this wrong, but I think we need to approve it for a year. He's gonna have substantial investment. I think the requirements need to state that if there's a problem, like Jeff said, that can trigger a review. And you need to be prepared to mitigate those, which I think are all doable. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that you have to meet these requirements, you're asking for something that's a little bit on the edge. I think it'll work, and I think that if the proper mitigations, nobody will even know what's going on. It's gonna be no worse than the dairy and the feed processing that was there before, as long as you're responsible. So let's just make sure that that happens.
Tammy Edgeman for the record. It seems like we have a whole lot of what-ifs in the event and pushing him through something as one person versus the whole community that's around there that is ag and quiet and residential, and that is gonna be at the mercy of their real estate property. We're trying to help one person start a business at the mercy of everybody else, is how I feel.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a question. Alex, do you know of any other operations just like the one that you're proposing? You know, one comment I really liked tonight was that we ought to compare apples to apples. Is there actually anything in existence that we could see?
None that I know of. Most facilities that produce pellets like this are pretty big, you know, they have million-dollar pellet presses. You know, definitely not hobby grade. As far as I know, I heard there was one up in, up by Elko. It closed down, but they weren't, they didn't just do pellets, I think there is more to it. And then the other one that I know of is in Southern Oregon. And that's all I know that's close by.
So nothing really at this scale, this small?
No. Again, this is...
So what we're trying to compare to would be production facilities that are really much larger.
Yeah.
And probably not all, I mean, a lot of that processing probably would be outside. I mean, it's not all contained.
Honestly, if I had the power and everything, I'd probably just do it at my house. It's, you know, that's small.
Just one comment, and I want to make this comment to the public because I know this happens, and I see you all out there, and you have these concerns. And believe me, we appreciate that you have these concerns and come to us. When we're talking about the conditions, and I don't think in any of your agenda items or anything that you guys carry in, you have these conditions. There is a list of conditions that go along with an SUP or any of these things that we're discussing here tonight. And those conditions must be met for the special use permit to be not only approved, but to be renewed the following year or after the following review. So those conditions are, I urge you to go to the county's website, you can pull them up on the county's website. In this case, we've got nine different categories, eight different categories with many other subsections to those that are the conditions that must be met for this business to have its special use permit. So I urge you out there to look into this because we don't just pick these things wildly and randomly add these conditions along. Typically, they're already in here. We may add conditions here just because we want to protect you as public people, as the public around you, I mean, around this business. So we do take your, we do take what you, as you were saying, weighted. We do weigh that, believe me, we do.
So, Joe, are you wanting to speak in?
Yeah, I would like to. Joe Frey for the record. Earlier was asked if, I think by Commissioner Hyde, if you knew of any other facilities. I operate an ag facility with a very large hammer mill. It's just inside of a general steel building, and I run it with a big generator that would be something that you would see, you know, powering the ice cream truck at the cantaloupe festival. And from outside, you can hear the generator, which is very quiet, but you can't hear the hammer mill over the generator. So inside the shop, it is dusty, I'm running dry material through it. I know previously the alfalfa comparison was made, we run alfalfa through it and hemp. But, yeah, it's dusty on the inside, but on the outside of the building, after the bags and stuff like that, there's no, I mean, very, very little dust. So it's something, you know, I would ask Alex to be a kind neighbor if there were events going on over at Latens or something, that would be very nice to try to accommodate them in any way, shape, or form. But other than that, I don't see it as being a major nuisance to the community if done properly.
Thank you, Joe. Any other comments? All right. Can I have a motion?
Excuse me, Kelly, comment again?
Cannot. You had your one else. Why is all this time and these people don't get to?
I asked for any more further public comment, and nobody stepped forward.
Three minutes and he gets all night. There's 15 people that are not happy.
I understand that. And when I asked for more public comment, that's when you should have come forward.
All right, is there anybody that would like to make public comment? That has not previously made public comment? All right, can you please step up to the mic?
No, you go ahead first.
Terrence McGowan, 4511 Alcorn Road.
Push the button, so we're green.
Terrence McGowan, 4511 Alcorn Road, but our property borders McLean and Bottom. You guys are up here pitching this as a hobby, sounds to me like you guys already decided this was a good deal. Do you, anybody, any of you guys live next to where he's doing this? We all do. So I would like you to wait our opinions a little. So I would like you to wait our opinions a little heavier than you have been, thank you.
Please state-
It's no hobby running 24 hours a day.
Thank you for allowing a public comment and-
Please state your name and address for-
My Nancy, I'm Nancy Stewart, I live at 828 McLean Road. My husband and I started a subdivision along the river. We are within about five minutes of where you're going to be starting your plant. And the traffic, and I don't imagine that the county has much control over the traffic or widening that road on McLean, is that correct? It's a state highway, correct? So you have no, no input, I guess, no power in that regard. And already, we're seeing increased traffic, so I was especially interested in hearing how much traffic you will produce, because it's only a two-lane road. My husband was driving his tractor, trying to get it fixed just from the main road into our driveway, and he was only going about 25 miles an hour. We had a man, that's a double yellow lane, pass him at 80 miles an hour, and so, traffic on that road is really, really bad. And we've had deer killed right there at the bridge, which the man that came with us ended up burying two of them because nobody else would come and bury them. So he buried them in his yard. And so, living in that area is not easy. But on the other hand, we like to see businesses, new businesses start here in Fallon, but we only live five minutes from that business. And you talked about the EPA, and one of the members of the audience gave this to us, and here it says, according to a study conducted by the EPA, wood pellet facilities release huge amounts of harmful air pollution. Eighty, excuse me, 67% of people living within a half mile, a half mile, of pellet mills experience dust every day. And then they also talked about the noise that is produced at night in this short study. So I wanted to thank the lady here tonight for doing that for us. We did not get a man, we did not get a letter to produce comment, we didn't even know about it until two days ago. And then somebody told us that the county only sends out about 350 notifications for comment, I don't know if that's true or not, but we were quite surprised, so we hobbled down here just to say, we wish him luck, we don't know if it's gotta be in our neighborhood or not, and we understand what you're looking at. But I like what you said about coming back and looking at that business on a short-term basis, because there's a lot of people that have moved in on that, in that area on McLean Road. More houses, people paying a lot of money to live there. So like I said, we're within five minutes of that.
Time is up. Thank you, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
I would comment just slightly.
Name and address for the record.
Coming down our place, people and trucks and big trucks are doing over 500 going down there, just roaring down there with those big trucks and cars and one thing and another. I know of seven different people that's been killed because of it, and I think we should do something to help us, cut things back to us.
Can you, can you please state your name and address for the record? Your name and address for the record?
Same as mine.
I'm Pete Stewart, I've been here for many, many years, more than most of you. I've had big places where I run and have animals and so forth, and I have stuff for our, other people to buy from if they want. And I think it's an absolute terror the way things are going there. They pull in off of the street, they just roar down and just roar down through that place, and there's lots of them, it's going way over a hundred dollars per a hundred a minute in their things, and I've seen several people killed, and I've seen a lot of bad things happen, and I'd like you guys to think about it a little bit, and maybe see if there's something we could do to help. And I'll be willing to help any one of you, if you want to come and stay at my place and look, and to go to it. My place goes clear back in, and I built my own place, my own things, and they come running in and do the same thing. And the man that was with us, he couldn't handle it any more longer, he's kind of having sick, but he would just really be able to help you too, and I'd sure help you guys to kind of look it out and see if we could get something that would be good. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Hi, my name is Nancy Upham, 3618 Bottom Road. Just for the records, I was very curious as to hear what kind of testing protocols would be going on for air quality, soil, soil quality, or soil particular matter, and water. I haven't heard any testing procedures, sure, you can get all the permits in the world, but if there aren't tests set up to check it after the fact, then you've got no evidence to go on. So that's what I was hoping to hear, I have heard nothing of that. I appreciate you all opening this back up to public comment, but I think that in granting a special use permit, maybe that ought to be a condition that's met or in the writing of the special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica Huckbee, 5033 Austin Highway. So mine's more informational, we have a Class II end-up permit. We have the salt flat across from Sand Mountain, we've got 1,000 acres out there, we've had the Class II permit for 10 years. There is a area disturbance permit, there is a permit for our generator, there is a permit for air pollution. There's also permits for bag houses, which he would, might have to get because of the bagging facility at the place. So you get that initial permit, and then you have to get opacity certified, you gotta go to smoke school every six months. So a Class II permit, at least ours, is $25,000 every five years for the initial permit. Then you have the smoke school, which is every six months, which is $250 to stay certified. Every 30 days, you have to complete an opacity form and keep records for end-up, which they will come and review about once every five years. End-up does not really talk to you that much, it's more of a self-reporting situation, at least for us, that's how it works. So, where did I go? So on top of that, you have an annual emissions report that you have to file with end-up, and then you pay an additional fee on top of that. So, so we do the 25,000 permit, and then 5,000 every year for emissions, is how ours works. And let me see where else someone is going with that, I forgot. But there's the op-, oh, industrial hygienist. The state of Nevada has industrial hygienists, they come out, if you call them, they will do the studying, they will do the decibel studying for free, they will do the dust for free. If Alex needs that information, I can give it to him because we've had it done at our plant to make sure that our employees didn't need, you know, hearing protection and everything. So they do offer free testing, and they do a report, and they'll send it to you. So if he needs to get that information, there are free resources out there that I can refer him to. But that's kind of more of informational stuff, the end-up, yeah, you get the permits, but they don't really come out and regulate you. But the industrial hygienist, they can come out and do stuff for free. I think it's only once a year, though, that they'll do that. So as far as some of the testing and some of it being, you know, overseen by someone else, those are a few of the options.
Thank you.
Hey there, Connor Gedge, 701 Danny Street. I grew up on Rosewood Drive, which is just out of that picture right there. My mom still lives there, she's got chronic health conditions, I'm not, I'm kind of worried about what the dust would do to area of those conditions. We talk about this being a pretty small operation, just kind of a startup, a proof of concept, and we have all these limits we've discussed. So I'm hoping that if you guys do approve this, which it kind of, we get the feeling that you are, those limits for how much we produce, noise levels, checking and all that stuff is at least set in stone before any kind of approval happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lorley Christensen, I live at 171, is it on?
Sounds green.
Hello, okay. I'm a school teacher, I don't use a microphone, I have a loud voice. I live on Latin Road, however, I own property just across from McLean Road, from, from the old Jernigan's, we call it the Jernigan's Dairy, but my, one of my concerns is, I just heard Huck Salt, I think, give a whole list and of all the accommodations and everything that they have to do. Oftentimes, when you're zoned agricultural, you don't, they waive a lot of those, a lot of those things, and you don't have to get those done. So clearly, I mean, he's not gonna be able to pay $25,000, you know, that much, but there are some things that probably still should be checked. It's a great idea, doing it in an ag zone is not okay for me, and I do not think it is agricultural. Agricultural, in fact, I think I have it here. When you actually start processing it, it actually eliminates that ag capability. So we don't have dog food places in the middle of the ag zones, they're not agricultural. They may use agricultural components or, or, they may have, they may use, I mean, we use ag products. I mean, we eat every day, so, but that doesn't mean a restaurant because they got fresh food from Latin Farms are all of a sudden agricultural. Like, that's not how that works. And so, I just want to be sure, if, if he says he's gonna do everything he's gonna do, then it sounds hunky-dory and it sounds great, but we have no guarantees and we really have no evidence, we don't have an example of where it's been done. We don't know what it's gonna be like. He doesn't know what it's gonna be like because he hasn't done it. So I think there is a leap of faith that needs to be taken, but also some cautions to ensure that everything is still okay. I don't like to see ag zones change. I think it opens the door for other things, and I don't like that. I like agriculture, we are an agricultural community, I would like to say that. Years ago, you probably heard people complaining on Rosewood that it stunk because Jernigan's Dairy was, was stinking, and I'm like, you bought a house across the street from a dairy, it's gonna stink. So this is something new, this isn't, we are already here.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Push the, push the button, so it turns green.
There you go.
Stupid mic. Ken Brown, 3261 Casey Road. I'm a retired engineer from NDOT, and I'm opposed to this. There are too many acres, oh, look out there, hazen, I mean, how many thousand acres have you got out there? Zoned industrial, go out to hazen. You need power, there's a 96,000-volt power line that runs through there. And my concern is, is, is by the same token, too, Highway 50 is designed for a lot heavier truck traffic than McLean Road is, and I'm concerned about the, the ingress from, for bringing product in and the egress for the, sending the product out, you've got a lot of truck traffic there. And I'm, I'm also concerned about, do you people remember the railroad tie fire? How about over at Silver Springs where they have the creosote factory, it burns down about over two years, you know, and it just, I think there are other places, I'm not opposed to the operation, I'm opposed to the location of the operation. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nancy Suley, and I live at 4554 Alcorn Road, and I wrote a statement and presented it, but I want to say, I want to state it. My statement is regarding the emissions into our environment and the safety of placing the facility in an agricultural area and near mini homes jeopardizing the health and well-being of our county and city. Emissions from wood product manufacturing are listed as hazardous air pollutants and volatile organic carbons as found in the Wood Products MACT Study of 1999 and also the Brown University Study. I stand with my family and friends of Churchill County and the City of Fallon to oppose this facility.
Thank you.
Catherine McGowan, 4511 Alcorn Road. My property actually borders it, along with my husband. Couple of questions I have. One, is the building department gonna be doing permits and everything for this hush house? Secondly, I was wondering if there's gonna be customers, is that gonna be an increase of traffic with customers coming in? Nobody's addressed that. And one of my really big concerns is when you guys are comparing like dog food with pellets, first off, they don't eat, we don't eat pellets. It's not an agriculture, it's a timber product, it's wood. You know, that's one thing, if this is an agriculture, we do not have timber here, that is why we have our coats. And you guys are like skirting everything to try and make it up. And then when you guys are comparing the sawdust at, you know, well, I call it Gallagher's, you can tell how old I am, you know, that's different than actually processing it. It's not, when it's in a pile, it's not the same as processing it. And I just think that you guys are trying to fit this in without really looking at if this fits as agriculture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jill Christensen, 3655 Shekla Road, part of the Latin contingents, our farm is right there. And my only question was, in the letter, it says, I fully acknowledge that if permission is granted for this reclassification and temporary use of the facility, it will be under the condition that the operation remains temporary. And I just think we ought to address that with a, with a definition of what temporary is, and as we, we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right, seeing none. We can adjust if, I guess, Joe or Dean or them, do you guys want to address the last comment on the temporary? Or what? We define as temporary?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I think what we were talking about is temporary, that is where we're, where he is not gonna produce more than 600 pounds of pellets a day. It, once he goes beyond that, then that triggers, I think that's the, the discussion we had, that after the 600 pounds, or he has to add another employee or anything like that, that would then trigger him to have to move his entire operation to an industrial area, correct?
That, that and, and, again, he's trying to do it as a startup, and, and that most of the equipment is on-site, and that's, again, why we're classifying it, that's why we have the two uses, again, one's, one's, one's approved and there has to be, one's not, and that's why we have to determine what use it's more similar to. And again, it, it is a startup business that he wants to do, with the understanding that if it is success, that he would probably go purchase someplace else and make this a larger operation.
And while I've got the microphone, if you don't mind me addressing one other thing, I did, I think there's a little bit of confusion that we're trying to rezone this, or rezone that ag property. That is not what's going on here. What we have is, we have an ag property that contains much of the equipment that's needed for this process. And so, where, their determination here was, is where does this fit? Does it fit into a wood process? determination here was, is where does this fit? Does it fit into a wood processing, which would be plywood, sawing of raw logs, so on and so forth, making that? Or does it fit into like a grain pelleting, which it may not be edible, but it is basically the same as the grain pellets that you would produce with your grain out of the same silos? And then finally, again, I really want the public to understand this. We're not just throwing these out here. These recommendations that they're talking about are all included in the special use permit. The final one, and I'm not going to read all of these, but I just want everybody to understand that all state and/or federal permits required for this type of business shall be obtained and maintained. Any, and safety improvements required by a state farm marshal be, shall be installed, and end up, air and other permits shall be obtained. Now, we can add, because I think Ms. Huck, the one had a really good presentation there. What we didn't know is, and get that information to include it in one of our recommendations, that he does have the air quality and the water quality and whatever else needs to be tested annually. I think that's, I don't think that's a problem. I think that's something that we could add to this and, you know, make everybody feel a little better about it. All at least you would have an outside source that testing it and the sound as well.
Scott.
Mr. Chair, Scott Nelson for the record. The one question that came up that is, is temporary to me. Like, okay, there's the amount of production, okay, but that doesn't mean it's temporary. If he produces under 600 pounds an hour for the next 40 years, then when does it become temporary? And the person that was asking that question was looking more at what does temporary mean, not, well, if he stays under a certain amount, it can go on forever. And that is a good question.
So I guess I would ask that that be, you know, I mean, that's a statement from the applicant, and so I believe that that should be best answered by the applicant. And then the question in turn, the conditions that you have listed do not set an end date. And typically, we would not set an end date that says you must leave by a certain time because of the very basis that either the use is compatible or it is not. We only have very few businesses that are listed as temporary on our, under our code, and this is not one of them. And so I think the basis was, this was planned to be temporary. It's in, my understanding is it's intended to be temporary, but the permit that's being discussed here generally would not be, have a finite end date unless the applicant suggests that he has an end date that he's willing to accept, and then the board puts that as a condition.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm, I have a problem with that temporary, and I think what Mrs. Chris Jansen meant really is, are we going to set a timeline, a time period? And I think if we do that, what we're saying is that we're not really sure about this classification, and we're just going to do this temporarily for a few minutes, you know, for a year or two years, and that's it. This is an incubation period. I'm kind of at the point where I really would like to see another operation that's similar to what you're proposing. I, I would like to see that in operation. And I have, you know, I was part of the staff meeting. I've, I've gone out to see you, and I've listened to everybody here tonight. And I'm, and now I'm sitting here thinking, do we actually know enough to make a decision? Are we, are we in a position right here as planning commissioners to make a decision? I like what Scott said. Yeah, we could make a decision based on all these controls, have those in place. I really like that. But I'm kind of, right now, fellow members, I'm, I'm in the position where I kind of like to see, let's see another operation that's similar to this, that we actually could compare. And just a few thoughts I want to express. One is that, this one thought tonight is that for it to be agricultural, it has to be edible. And I'm thinking, I don't eat wool. And I fill out a report every quarter, well, four years, I guess, with the federal government about what my agricultural operations are. And on that form is timber. And the question asked, do I own timber? And what am I doing with timber? Do I have timber on my land? So it definitely is agricultural. But what's bothering me tonight is that somehow we're getting these studies from Brown University and others about how producing pellets can be carcinogenic. And I'm wondering, is that really true? Has that fully been vetted? And so I kind of want to give it a little more time. I want to, I want to, I want to see some studies myself. And I'd like to see something that's comparable. And I'd hate for you to jump into a business where you're having to pay 25,000 for this permit and 25, you wouldn't be able to do it. And so I'm at the point right tonight where I'm a little bit, where I want, I want more information.
With that being said, thanks, Mark. Fellow board members, is there other people that feel like they would like some more information on this subject?
I would ask that if you do request to table it and ask for more information, that you provide a little direction to staff and to the applicant on what in particular it is that you're looking for. Obviously, it is the burden of the applicant to prove that this is a conforming use. And so obviously, the public has made pretty clear their comments regarding to noise and air quality, water usage.
So yeah, I think if, if we are to table that, I'm not speaking for everybody on the board, but I think we would be able to, need a little more research, Randy, Dean, Alex, on like the air quality and noise and those levels, so we could put those as stipulations, like in our, in the findings, or not in the findings, but in the conditions. So we can have that, like a set, you know, amount of noise, a set this and a set that, you know, for the air and water quality that way. That would be one that I think, I think the research that you brought up on the carcinogens and stuff, I believe that's for us to do our own due diligence. You know, I think we can all Google something, you know. I mean, that's what everybody else did, you know, so. And then on that due diligence, and then with you, Alex, I'd like you to do some of the homework on some of the stuff, right, of these questions, concerns, right, that way. But probably the biggest thing is to be able to provide staff with a duplicate or similar type business and what that brings. Or, you know, if you can do some research, find somebody, talk to them, and give us some more evidence on what they have done for noise, location, things like that, air quality, that way. And I think once we have those things discovered, we would be able to make a decision.
And I would, I would highly recommend you talk Mrs. Huck be back there because she seemed like she had a wealth of information there that would be beneficial to you. And I would get her information gathered up and present that to Dean and Randy as well.
And, yeah.
Do you know which type of air quality permit you need? Have you done that research yet? Is it a type one, a type two? What is it?
I have, I, I don't remember exactly what type. It was, if I remember, the dollar value is around the 500 a year.
Yeah, your operation's smaller, so it's going to be less.
Yeah, yeah. And then it is, you know, I think it's also recognized by the federal government and also our state that pellets are a green renewable resource, energy. You know, it's, it's also beneficial to.
I'm not arguing that point.
Okay.
Like, I don't disagree with the business.
I think.
On the flip side of the coin, we've got to make sure that we're not creating a nuisance. And that's where I would like a little more information as to the air quality standards that you're going to have to adhere to, water quality. I'm not that worried about it. It's an existing well in a dairy. You're not going to mess up the water, but.
One other thing for the board, this is two separate motions and two separate decisions to be made. It sounds like the board may have already made a decision as to whether or not this is going to be considered timber or crop processing, and that resolving that today may take further things off the table if you want to do that, which would, I mean, it'd still make it a special use permit. All of the remaining questions would still need to be answered. The question is just whether or not it will be, what you're planning to consider it under.
So is everybody clear on that, that we can table the S U P?
So.
And make a motion on the other.
So we can make a motion on the similar use.
Okay. If, if there's no further comment. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a problem making that motion on similar use. I think that's where I personally, I'd like more information. And you're saying, you're recommending that we do more study. But before we slide this into making it similar to crop processing, if there actually is something that is, that is proven to be harmful in processing wood pellets as compared to processing grain, I'd like to know that.
I agree. But I would say at this point, Mark, that that would be something that would come up on the special use permit. We can find that, that could be determined in there. So I, I would think that, are we not, are we disagreeing that, that this is a wood processing operation? Or is this a, an operation that is more like a grain pellet processing? I, I don't.
Is that a decision we have to make tonight?
Well, no, I mean, we can table them both, but I, I think that that part of it seems to be pretty clear to me.
Yeah, I'd table them both right now.
Oh, we're going to have to come back to, come back to this anyway. So I think, you know, I mean, if we all agree, I mean, or can agree to disagree or whatever, that we could table both.
Table both.
So can I get a motion?
Tammy Edgman for the record. I have a motion to table both topics.
Can, can you include how long?
Oh, yeah, for 30 days.
For 30 days?
I prefer you just said until the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. I don't know if that's exactly 30 days from now and.
We'll table until the next commission meeting, second Wednesday in June.
Ben moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
All right, passes. The site has been tabled, and we all have some work to do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item F of new business. Consideration of a possible action of a special use permit application, S U P 25-000012 for an expansion of a rail-based services facility filed by Jared Lack of Arco National on behalf of IRG Realty Advisors. The property is located at 17127 Inland Port Drive, assessors parcel numbers 009-251-77 and 009-251-78 in the industrial zoning district. The applicant proposes the addition of 238,680 square feet warehouse at the rail industrial park. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
I'm Bill Staub. I'm the project manager for IRG RA at 17,127 Inland Port Drive, the Port of Nevada, or the Inland Port Project.
Tara Anderson for the record, same address.
Thank you. And Dean, you want to give us a little background on this?
Sure, thank you. Dean Patterson, Public Works and Planning for the record. The site has a long permitting history that is summarized in the staff report. The most recent is a permit is the special use permit with hazardous materials for the butane rail car transloading that was heard earlier this year. It had no structural facilities. The most relevant to interactions with this application is the special use permit with a variance from last year for a container storage yard and related facilities, as well as additional rail extensions. That site required a number of improvements to be finished before additional permitting, and you heard from the applicant about the progress on those at the last meeting. This applicant, this application proposes a roughly 248,000 square foot building with the intention that it be leased for a future user. Included in the proposal is the consideration for the site to include nighttime operations and large volumes of traffic associated with this big building. The use is largely set up as a warehouse, storage with, and distribution facility, but other industrial uses, users are listed in the staff report. That can be located within it without an additional special use permit. The site plan and application material describe the project in detail. The building fronts closely along the Reno Highway. It is mainly designed to serve large delivery trucks on the northeast side, which you can see the parking lot on the upper part, upper side of the building on the screen. And it includes a parking lot for them. The passenger vehicle parking surrounds the building on the other sides. Access to the facility is integrated with the access driveway through the site to the container storage facility at the south end of the lot. At the north end of the building is a large water storage tank for fire storage and a large stormwater pond. Landscaping is integrated throughout the perimeter parking. The staff report reviewed the approval criteria. There were no major issues identified. Minor issues include the complexity of a new well and public water system for the building and large number of employees, a large commercial septic system, providing fire protection, and a large water tank for the building, determining the parking requirements and meeting other code standards. These are described in more detail in the staff report. The only item of note is that the application will generate extensive large truck traffic. A traffic study was performed and provided to N D O T who is reviewing it. The existing N D O T access is highly constructed to control traffic at this ax, at the access point. And that, if you see the driveway running toward the, I guess, the left side of the application, yeah, there, you're pointing at it right there on the highway. So that's the point. They take access. It's actually in Lyon County. It's called a high T and has been adequate for the existing traffic. Staff contacted N D O T regarding their thoughts on the project. They indicate some minor corrections are needed for, to the study before they fully review it. Their initial thoughts are that the existing traffic intersection infrastructure should be adequate, though some changes might be needed after the full review is done. The building department provided comments that the building permits, that building permits meeting, the building codes will be required, and third-party review and inspections will be needed. No other comments were received. Staff recommends approval with conditions that are listed in the staff report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dean. Is there anything you guys would like to add?
Sure. Tara Anderson again for the record. I just wanted to briefly, I, I don't know in the times that my colleagues have come before you historically, how much context they've given you to who we are as an organization, just so that you have a level of confidence, one, in the experience that we draw from, but two, most importantly, our ability to deliver a successful project in your community. Industrial Realty Group is our master holdings company. IRG RA is our subsidiary property management, project management, and asset management arm of the company. We are privately held, arguably the, quite possibly the largest privately held industrial commercial broker nationally. We manage and redevelop anywhere from about 100 to 130 million square feet around the country. Our real bread and butter is adaptive reuse, so we're very familiar with navigating complex jurisdictional regulations, environmental intensive, intensive sites, et cetera. And so we are very ambitious about this site and our portfolio and its ability in a broader network of rail-served assets that, that we find to be vital for our distribution. a broader network of rail-served assets that, that we find to be vital for our distribution channels nationally. And so, I won't read you, there's four or five slides that I'm, I'm sure staff shared with you, I won't read them to you, you're all, I believe, probably briefed on it. But, but this really is very much in our wheelhouse, we're very excited about this project. Candidly, it is a, what by industry standards are described as a speculative building. We do not yet have an end user in mind. We are approaching this project site with more of a build it and they will come, given the level of interest that's come via the, the rail activity out there. So, it has been designed, both by structural integrity, building code, and land use, to serve and function as a warehouse distribution facility. Should that change based off of market interest or the nature of the tenants that inquire about leasing the property from us, of course, there will be future activity coming before you that tenant improvements, business licensing, et cetera, you as a commissioner, as a body and as a community will have full visibility to who ultimately ends up being the occupier of the building. But we're trying not to anticipate what we don't know to be certain requirements until we know who, who our user is. So it's, it's been designed as a warehouse facility, we think there's a high probability of that, but of course, if there's a departure from that based off of market interest, we'll be back before you to introduce you to that prospective user and any improvements that might come or be required to allow them to be on the site. I mean, if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to follow up on just one, one aspect of this. We have seen plans, there's actually provisions for if there are uses that require additional parking, right? We've got additional parking set aside for uses that may potentially come in to accommodate for that. I think that's about the only thing that was really, that could really add something to this project, right, with, with a different use coming in. So we've already, we've already accounted for that for any future uses to come in, so...
Thank you, Randy.
Can I ask a question, real quick?
Yeah.
Is this tied into the container facility? Are you guys together with that project as well?
We are together, that is, that's on the same, that's adjacent, when you see the, the site illustration there, the container yard is just, by way of orientation on the page, to the right of where this building will be housed. So it's part of a broader, comprehensive intermodal rail operation that we have out there, and this building will be an accessory building to that, that operation.
So are you guys an owner on this project?
Yes, we, we own the property.
You do own the property, the entire property, the container site, the whole thing?
Correct.
Okay. I thought they did a great job on the containers, honestly, I think they did a really good project there.
Yeah, and actually, you know, again, you guys don't notice the plans, but, you know, they're still integrating that berm to, to head further west and ultimately die out, so then you'll see the building, but, yeah. And I think, again, I agree with, with Member Nelson there, they did a really good job on that, that berm, and I think it really accomplished, you know, what, what we were looking for on that, so...
Yeah, I'd have to say, being, sitting on this board and, and approving that, we were a little nervous about that approval, and every time I drive by it, I feel like we definitely made the right decision, you folks have done a stellar job with that, and it's turned out very well.
Thank you.
All right, so I didn't have anything, I reviewed anything, I don't have any comment. Is there any public comment? Or do we have anything more from the board, or, is there any public comment?
No.
All right, see, and, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Tam, yeah.
Tammy Edgman, for the record, based on the information provided in the application and the staff report and heard tonight, I move that the findings have been met for the conformance with the criteria found, Intermodal County Code 16.08.080H, and therefore approve the application for a special use permit by the Port of Nevada for rail-based services on 17127 Inland Port Drive, accessories parcel number 009-251-78. This approval is subject to conditions as listed in the staff report.
It's been moved in seconded, Scott seconded. Diane, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, passed unanimously, thank you, guys. So there is a 10-day appeal period on all applications approved by the planning commission. After that time, the department will contact the applicant to complete the process. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 10, update related to code and master plan changes.
I have a quick one-hour presentation.
You, you got this?
Okay. Oh, Randy, take care of it.
So, as you guys were aware, we had a workshop last month. We're going to propose another workshop on June 24th, another joint workshop to bring forth the, the revised use table, also bring forth the proposed I, industrial zones, the I-1, I-2, I-3, within all the industrial parcels within the county. Again, there's 167 existing industrial parcels, so we're really going to, we're really going to narrow down where we want the I-1, I-2, I-3, and then again, that'll go, coincide with the use tables, and then we'll also have definitions for, you know, those uses. We'd like to have definitions, have more clarity in those uses. So, Joe, Dean and I will be working on that over the next month or so to have that ready for you guys for June 24th workshop, and I think that's at 6:30, Diane?
Yes.
And do we have flexibility with that one as well, I think? I mean, if we wanted to bump that?
Yes, you can, so that's flexible date, it's whatever date the commission prefers. Obviously, that's a joint workshop with the commission and you folks, so if that date doesn't work, please let us know, that's the, that was the standing day, but we are able and open to move it.
And again, we're open, so we did mention back in the workshop, if you guys have some uses that you'd like to see in there, any comments, whatever, whatever you want us to incorporate in that, again, we, the plan is to do the workshop, and then that first, our meeting in July would be where we, we presented to you guys for, for you guys to, you know, either approve for recommendation to the board, or tell us, we go back and hit the drawing board again. If you guys do recommend it to the board for approval, then we would try to hit that second meeting in July for the board for the first reading, and then we would get it to the sec, the first meeting in August for the final approval. So, there is a lot of work, and, and again, the more input that we get, you know, more upfront, I think the more, the better product we can have for, for the workshop that we present to you guys. So, like I said, it's, it's a work in progress.
Is it June 24th?
June 24th, yes. That's, that's what we're proposing, so, that's our typical workshop date, it's the second, it's the fourth Tuesday of the month is our typical workshop.
Can I ask a date or clock that?
No.
Randy, you have a question?
Yes.
Tammy Edgman, for the board, how does, how does the public get notified of that for the industrial zoning changes? How do, how do we do that when they're going in so many different areas?
So, on that one, we will notify every industrial, every owner of each industrial parcel, right? And then I think we will go out our typical 300 feet, that, I mean, that's, that's standard what we would do. And, and, and we, I mean, really, when you get out into those other areas, I mean, if you go out 300 feet, you're going to go to the next section, and I mean, you're not, I mean, we'd have, we could probably cover huge amounts of land, so, I guess we will run the numbers and analyze and see how much that is. Really, it's just, we really want to get the, because if, it affects the industrial-zoned areas and those owners, those are the ones we really want in here for the workshop to talk about that, right? So, not that it doesn't affect everybody else around there, but I guess to go back to answer your question, we'll, we'll do the, the owners, we'll do our 300 feet, and then we, if they don't have the 30, and we can just go back and do the 30 owners, it's just letters for us, I mean, we do, do it like we do everything else.
Are, are you talking about how we will notify them about the workshop, or how the people who are going to be doing stuff on industrial moving forward would be notified?
I'm talking about the people that will be affected around the industrial zones. Like how, I mean, if 300 feet and the industrial zone is 400 acres, it's owned by one person, outside of that, no, none of the homeowners around that industrial is going to be notified, is my question.
So, so we, we will, we will do it the, the typical county way, we will go 300 feet or 30 unique owners around that parcel, each one of those parcels, so, that's how we will notify people. We can, we can put it on Facebook Blast, we can put it on our website, that we're having this workshop, we can do all that stuff, too. It's just, you know, our code says 300 feet or 30 unique owners, so that's, that's what we're going to do. Everything else will be on top of that, so...
So I think we're all getting with 24, at whatever time you send us, 6, 6:30, you know, so...
I just wanted to be clear that we do not send out notification letters when it's a workshop, because there's no application for a specific thing, I just wanted to be clear.
Quick question, Randy, we kind of had a little bit of a discussion on this, is there anything in the future to start looking at the C1 properties and including them into some of this now?
So again, we're, the industrial portion of this is relatively small in the county, right? We have 167 parcels, and you guys saw the map in the other one, so this is kind of, I'm not saying it's an easy task for us to do, but if we can get this one dialed in, then it can get into the C1, C2, ultimately into the Ag, I mean, we can really redo our use table throughout the whole thing. We just don't want to have a different use table for, and a different product for industrial than have everything else as it is, because then there's no consistency, right? So, we want to start with the industrial, because again, that, right, we, we just went through the Redwood thing, and we really want to get that cleaned up, starting there, and then progressively go through the thing, so that, I think this is kind of a two-phaser, but if we can really dial down this industrial, and, and everybody likes it and think that that's what they want to do, then, then it's just an easier, it's easier for us to run it through the rest of the table.
All right. Thank you. So moving on to item 11, the consent agenda, can I get a motion?
There's no items, you get it?
No, there's none, all right.
Tammy Edgman, for the record, right? Do we have to...
No, we don't have nothing on the consent agenda, so, item 12, is there any public comment? All right, this meeting's adjourned, thank you.